16, 2025 Planning Commission meeting for Sylvan Township. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I'd like to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on the agenda is roll call. If I could start with you Doug, please?
Doug Jackson.
Tom Burris.
For sure.
Courtney Heller.
Leah Eric.
Matt Kahn.
All right, um, next, uh, have you all had a chance to look at the agenda and you need a motion to accept?
I'll move.
You have a second? Leah? And then have you had a chance to review last month's minutes? Are there any proposed changes? Okay, I need a motion to approve last month's minutes.
I'll move. Second?
All right, so next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Where we have administrative site plan review for 25-004 at Chelsea Square. We have an attachment of documents to go ahead and review. This involves uh, the removal of eight trees along the north property line due to utility. In being installed and having to revise the design of the retaining wall on the north side of unit 32. Uh, both changes are intended to help with utility easements, so we're um, looking to hear your opinions on what's been presented. Yeah.
So it's on the consent agenda, so you can just accept the consent agenda or you can pull it off of the consent agenda. Um, it's an administrative site plan review, so it's already been approved.
Perfect.
By the zoning administrator. It's just a report to tell you that I approved it and if you had any concerns with my approval, you would then uh, take it off and inform me of those concerns so that I don't approve something like that the next time.
Okay.
If you all remember this one, uh, we brought to you last month.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so the next episode would be either to recommend or not recommend to you to move forward with the consent. Is that right?
Yeah, it would just be to, if you approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
A motion to approve the consent agenda. Or if you don't want to, you would pull an item off of the consent agenda and you would put it on under new business.
Okay.
All right, I move to uh, accept the the consent agenda.
Second then.
Who seconded, please?
Leah. All right, next on our agenda then is public comment.
We have to vote on it, don't we?
Do we have to vote? Yes, that one we do vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. All right, now we move on to public comment. It doesn't appear that there is any, so do I need a motion or anything on that to close it? All right, nothing on unfinished business, so moving to part nine, new business, which is extension request for combined final site plan review 25-002 at 3,752, which is the Chelsea Proving Grounds. If you, I'm guessing we all probably remember approving this. It was about a parking lot. And they've requested an extension related to wanting to be able to put the driveway or the parking lot and driveway in in one season of construction. And due to their contractor's schedule, they can't do it in this season, so they need to wait till spring. So are
Any proposed changes to it? Or just
None. No, just an extension due to the the schedule and the weather. And so here we would basically review and then make a motion to either approve or deny.
Yeah, there's uh, so on these extensions, um, when they become controversial would be as if you change something in between when you approved the project and the proposed extension. None of the code has changed, nothing has changed in the field or anything like that, so usually they're pretty simple. Um, there aren't any standards other than has anything changed, um, since you approved this. Our approvals are only good for six months, so it's a pretty short period of time. We should prob- I, I believe I have that on my um, next round of zoning text amendment to extend that to one year. Uh, to make it easier. Also, the ZBA has that same thing and um, we would like to extend that, so. Um, especially with the way financing works nowadays on these projects, it's pretty hard to get something going in six months. So almost, it seems like every project that we've had asked, has asked for an extension so far that, since I've been here.
Yeah. All right, so do I have a motion?
I'll still move that we extend it.
Um, so I have a motion made by Leah to approve the extension.
Support.
Supported by Matt Kahn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passed. And then on to part nine, which is comments or concerns of the planning commission members. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss? Scott?
Um, I can just bring up that uh, we have forwarded the uh, comment to the city master plan. To uh, the city planner and he has responded that he received it and it will go on the Octo- um, in the October 21st packet to the planning commission.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
I'll bring it up. Robin Hills, have we heard anything about Robin Hills? They still doing anything or they?
Well, they're doing stuff out there, um. And they're continuing to do it the same way that it has happened. So again, I'll bring it up. If you want to shut them down, we can. If you want them to continue, they can continue. So um, I don't think there is a will to shut the business down for what it is doing out there currently, so.
Not gonna have a, they didn't have fireworks this year and they not gonna have a buck pull out there this year either, so.
They're not?
No.
Weird.
Rebel, rebel run is how I understand.
Oh, is that where it's going this year?
Yeah.
All right, they, I know uh, they still have events out there. Every so often. I don't know what their schedule is. I have never in, at least in the last two to three years, been out there or anything, so I don't know if they still have their kitchen open or that area down in that area, but I know they have like big events out there at the, at their barns. Um, but that's all I know that they do out there currently, so.
Maybe for the benefit of newer members, could somebody just tell me in a summary what they should be doing and what they and I know the restaurant was not supposed to be there or something, but.
Well, I I know it did approve a restaurant there, um, but it was supposed to serve 50, something like 50% of the product was supposed to be made on site, but uh, the biggest concern is that it was approved under the agricultural tourism ordinance, which requires agricultural use of the property. And I believe there is very minimal agricultural use of the property currently.
Is that the major concern? Is just the
The tax situation?
The, the taxes are based on the use, not on the, yeah, so they're getting taxed, so. Matt would know more about the taxes.
I mean, if they're, I don't know if they're, if they have a easement on the property, you know, so they're getting uh, like if they're PA 116.
No, they don't have the PA 116 on there, so.
I mean, they're not.
Yeah, it's
Paying the full amount of taxes.
Yeah, they're paying the full amount of taxes.
So I mean.
I think the concern is our enforcement of our zoning. So if they're going outside of the ag ag tourism zoning.
Yeah.
Not complying.
That would be the concern.
Yeah, we should, we should enforce it. So Scott, you've been doing a little follow-up on it, right? Talking with the attorney or something?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to shut them down tomorrow if you want me to, so I can give them a violation notice and tell them what they need to do. So anytime.
Otherwise they'd have to be rezoned?
Uh, well, we wouldn't want to rezone that to commercial because if we rezoned that hundred acres to commercial, they would be able to put a mega mall there or something else. So yeah, they would have to comply, they would just have to comply with their original special use permit. So and they could do that. I mean, they could, I mean, they could hire, like, you would go in there and farm the land for them, right?
Two acres?
How many acres do they have?
That's farmable?
Two acres maybe and I wouldn't Yeah.
I'm sure they could get somebody to come in there and do it.
In the very, very back, I know they had some vegetable crops and then they had some in recent years, they had
Sheep.
Some sheep.
Yeah.
I don't know if there still are or not.
I don't know if they still are out there either.
They were bringing sheep in from somebody else.
They brought them in.
Which that would be fine. I mean, that would still be agricultural use of the property. So just like if they hired another farmer to farm the land out there.
Right, for the size of
But the, the use of the property needs to be associated with the agricultural use, so um, that would be their biggest problem because because over the years, the way that you guys approved the buildings, I don't know how that use would have ever been associated with the use of the property. I guess wedding barns. The barns are sort of the, associated with a farm use. But like a 7,500 square foot commercial building with a
Kitchen?
Yeah, with a kitchen in it. I'm like, I don't know, like, what we would expect them to do in that other than have a restaurant. So.
We should be careful what we wish for.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. We, we don't get complaints on it. Um, none of the neighbors have any concerns with it. So I don't, and we get tax revenue from it, so I, I get it, what you wish for, but is it, it doesn't seem to be the worst thing in the world that's happening.
So There, there, that's our only ag tourism, like barn sanctuary is not barn ag tourism.
Uh, you have, yeah, they didn't, they didn't get a permit. That would be ag tourism. They
It should be.
Should be.
They make a lot more money than most.
I, I believe they've came in and talked to us and I told them about that because I'm like, don't you have like events going on out there, like school bus tours and stuff? And I'm like, that's not allowed at a farm.
Yeah.
So they would have to get ag tourism and then they came in because they wanted to expand and we had told them what the ag tourism ordinance said and they said, well, we're gonna look at moving to Manchester, so.
Okay.
With Robin Hills Farms though, they are aware that they're not in compliance with the zoning?
I do not believe so.
You don't think they are aware?
They typically come in and explain to us how they are in compliance.
Yeah, when, when, when you guys approve special use permits every year, um, they give us a list of their agricultural uses that they're doing on the property. Because in reality, you shouldn't approve any permits if they're in violation of their special use permit.
Yep.
So when they come in every year, they explain to you what they're doing and you agree that that's good enough to issue a permit for that.
So is there a way to if, if they're not applying for a permit to notify them that they're out of compliance right now and like a warning without shutting them down?
Oh, we could give them a warning and then ask them to tell us what they're doing to comply with their regulations and I can get that letter from them again and then we can give it to you guys and you can determine if it's good enough. So I can give that to them.
So it's up to the planning commission to?
Uh, it would be the township board.
The board would have to direct you to do.
We could, we could give it to the board and say, is this valid enough to continue the use of this property? But I mean, it seems like the planning commission has done that every year that they come in here and ask for a special use permit and you grant it, you're sort of giving them the okay that what they're doing on the property is meeting the requirements.
But for you to to get the authority to give them a a warning.
I can give them a warning whenever I want.
Okay, but to have them submit a letter, they would submit the letter to the
To me.
Planning Commission?
As the zoning administrator, because I'm gonna give them a violation notice that says you're in violation of this. Please inform us how you, and then I'll get it and then I can bring it either to you guys or the board, whichever one you want me to bring it to, or I could just make the determination with the attorney.
Okay.
Was the uh, the building built before or after they got the special use agriculture?
After. It was done after the I was here when they got their original special use permit in 2013. Um, I actually had created your first agricultural tourism ordinance. And then after I left, you guys revised your agricultural tourism ordinance based on what uh, they wanted to do with that, the new, newer buildings.
So there was a building built that kind of sounded more like a commercial building with a kitchen that would violate this agricultural.
It wouldn't, as long as they use it or just agri, you know, what they would have to do, I mean, they
I'm just trying to understand what the, what the building, I've been in the building uh, a few times. And I'm trying to understand how that would be there to support agricultural tourism.
Well, if they, if they used it for classes, let's say, where you had, you were teaching about agriculture, or if you had a restaurant that served food that was produced from the property, that would support agricultural tourism because you're showing people this, all of this is made here on this farm, basically, and now we're serving it to you. So there's a whole bunch of different things you can do to support agricultural tourism.
But when it started, they had great visions of having classes and tomatoes grown.
And they used to have hydroponic, they used to have hydroponic uh, greenhouses. I'm not sure, like, it used to be Green Bright, I think was the parent company or Green. Something out of Ann Arbor.
And the vision.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The whole project.
Changed hands. I, I still
Vision and the money dried up.
Ownership.
It is.
Uh, it's just ran by different people, like, meaning the ownership group has taken less of an active role in the running of the farm. Because, I don't know, maybe they don't want to do it anymore.
Well, they were gonna put up a big wedding barn and then.
Yeah, I remember the original, they, remember they were going to have this huge like, it was almost like a ski chalet. That they were going to have, and then they were going to have a whole bunch of little like eco houses that were off the grid and that's why we created a very narrow um, ag tourism ordinance at first. And the thought behind making it very narrow was, let's see how it how it works and then they can expand it in the future. Um, and you did expand it in the future, so. Um, it was expanded about a year and a half after I had left.
They, they could appeal the zoning and have it, appeal to have it changed to something.
They can, yeah, they can request a um, they could request a new spec- or a amendment to their special use permit. If they believe that they could meet some sort of other ag tourism requirements. Um, or they could ask to have the ag tourism ordinance revised. Just like anybody can ask to have a zoning ordinance changed to the zoning text amendment. Um, if they went into our ag tourism ordinance and found the items that they think that they can't meet and then they just changed them. I don't know if you guys would be up for that or not up for that. Um, I don't, under the current ag tourism ordinance, it is very confusing the way that it's written because it was pieced together uh, uh, on a few different writings. Um, I think if you were gonna change the regulations, we'd want to go back to making a very specific requirements. Uh, the way we had it originally was sort of tailored so that the prop, very few properties could use it. You know, you had to be on a uh, major thoroughfare. You had, you know, these types of things so that you basically had to be on M52, accessed off of M52 if you're gonna use this ag tourism ordinance. Like the other agricultural uh, use that we have in this township is the Fauxseers um, farm stand and that is fully exempt under the Right to Farm Act. And they are sell, they are uh, complying with the general accepted management practices of the GAMPs for uh, the Right to Farm Act there. So we don't really have any say over that other than site plan review, which allows us to say, you know, if there's a parking problem or something like that. Um, and we had dealt with that back when I was here in 2013. To me and Scott Cooper, um, and we had originally approved it and then I left and you guys got into a lawsuit with them. Because your new management thought that it was not exempt under the Right to Farm Act, so. But I still believe it is exempt under the Right to Farm Act.
I, yeah, they're our neighbors.
Yeah, so um, and, and that's because they're selling actual product. It's not from the site that, where that is at, but it's from a site that they own elsewhere in, in the the state or there's something in the Right to Farm.
Manchester.
Manchester.
Yeah. So they can't, you can't, though, I, I don't think they would allow you to, like, if you were Monsanto's, to put a farm stand up and then bring in product from like Hawaii and Mexico and stuff and sell it. They're like a grocery store. I think it has to be within the state of Michigan, so. But yeah, farmers now can buy up like one acre pieces of property and put farm stands on them, um, similar to what like Fauxseers has out there. So and it's, and it's just an extra way to get uh, revenue for farmers, you know, because they can sell direct to somebody instead of having to go through the third party. I don't know if it's worth it. I don't think a lot of farmers are in that business of running it.
The vegetable farming is profitable that way.
Yeah.
What, where's the ordinance on the ag tourism?
Uh, 30, uh, I'm not, I don't have here. Let me see if I can find it real quick.
So then, if you have guests at your farm, like like children and, you know, coming out in a bus, you have to have an ag tourism permit?
Yeah, unless you're exempted under the Right to Farm Act for those uses.
So how, how would you be exempted? I mean, if you're
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a attorney or a farmer that is uh,
Well, I mean, because
Is looking at the Right to Farm Act, but I would look at your Right to Farm Act requirements and see if they get exempted from those things. Those types of school threats or something like that. But otherwise it would be, it, you could, you could claim that it's a uh, home business or something, but even a home business wouldn't allow you to have a whole school bus of kids come out to your site, so.
I mean, they have, yeah, small school buses, I know they're private schools, you know, small groups or what, whatnot.
Yeah, are you, yeah. The problem, I mean, I could see a whole bunch of problems not in planning by having that. Well, what if a kid gets injured on your site or what if that's, you know, what if all of this stuff happens? You're not a commercial insured uh, daycare or like commercial facility that handles those types of things, so.
Yeah, I don't know how that covers.
Things that are covered under the Right to Farm Act related to ag tourism are things that are marketing related, so like um, some of the farms we know in Manchester have these like farm-to-table dinners every quarter that's covered under Right to Farm, um. Some of the
I have seen.
Like occasional farm mark, like you have a market display outside in your front yard or this one says um, demonstrations, like if you're having like a sheep shearing demonstration or something, but it gets, if it's like every day or a certain, beyond a certain amount of time, it's not as much covered by the Right to Farm. So.
If it's like once a month, you know, occasional.
Yeah, I, I would suggest you talk to your land use attorney before you do anything on your farm.
I mean
I don't want to do that.
But
My problem comes down to my neighbor and the other problem is the parking at their property. When I can't get a tractor through because there's cars parked along the side of the road, what does that fall under?
What, what is he, what is your neighbor doing?
Actually a nuisance and that is not covered.
Yeah. I just need to warn him.
And they're also supposed to
They need to put a parking lot in.
What are they doing?
They'll have the 30, 40 cars in the road on the side of the
What are they doing? Who is your neighbor? What, I mean?
Country farm.
Ah.
Oh, they should probably be ag tourism.
They don't, they don't, they don't have a parking
Yeah, they're not in our
They have events sometimes and they, they park cars on both sides of the road and I have to go get out of my combine to get them out of the road so I can get by. It's just they don't have them very often, but it's just
Yeah.
Like, why don't they just get a parking lot, parking area, they got
And they have a lot of employees that live on that site too.
Well, then they get people to come, that come and pick up their grow, you know, their grow, their vegetables, their share.
That's exempt under the Right to Farm Act.
Sure, that's not a
But they do have to pull off of the road. I, I think, isn't there something in the Right to Farm Act that says they have to have space for them to pull off the road or something like?
Yes.
On my, on my property.
Obstruction and nuisance and yeah, there's all kinds of stuff in here.
I've never, I've never said anything to them, but, but
I think they're in Sharon Township though, aren't they? That's, that, they're across our border over there.
Sylvan.
No.
Tantrus.
Sylvan.
The actual
Hays Road?
Well, I, but where it act, the actual house.
Dress.
The operations right in, yeah.
Yeah, right at the top of the road.
That was in
Nope.
Nope.
The, the township line is
Very corner, but
Township line is right, they do have a house.
Grass Lake Road, isn't it? And at the end of Hayes is the, is the township ends.
It's
It's rank
It goes across Hayes and then it goes across Heim on an angle because it, the road's curved.
Yeah.
But it's like a quarter mile, eighth of a mile from the end of Hayes in the intersection of Heim. So they do have a house there at the township line. But that's a tenant house for their workers. It's not where they live, not the owners.
The owners don't live there, so they don't have room to make a parking lot?
Oh, they got all kinds of room.
There's all kinds of room there.
They got all kinds of room. They have a parking lot down there. It's just they don't want, people don't want to have to walk 100 yards or 50 yards or whatever for their events. They park right on the edge of the road. It's just like
They, back, back to Robin Hills.
I was just
Do you um, do you want our consensus or do we have, have to have a motion at a meeting?
You gave me enough. I'm giving them a violation on Monday when I come into work.
Okay, did, I mean, did we? Are we?
I mean, I, I can do that if I want, because
I'm, I'm wondering what the problem is.
Just don't need to tell me to do it, but
Quite honestly, I'm, yeah, I'm wondering what the problem is with Robin Hills.
A violation.
It was my lady's, I've done this guy's last six years, so.
They violate zoning?
Then let me just ask this question because I'm going through my head. If, if we the problem is they're not farming it and using it for agricultural tourism. They're doing things there, but what? I, they
Well, they'll tell, they'll tell us, they'll tell us that they are using it for egg. When we get that and then we'll have to go to court with them to figure out if they actually are or not, so.
So let's be careful.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to be is, you know, if, if, if we were to push an issue with them that we really are not able to quantify. I, and it ended up getting ugly, they shut down. We got what, 20 acres sitting there with a building on it that does what?
Yeah.
Best possible courses make it commercial, which you just said.
Were we
It's turned into a shopping
Your other court
Another wedding barn.
Similar to an old church, it would turn into a giant residential property, so.
So I'm, I'm wondering, uh. Yeah, it.
I feel.
Be careful to figure out, are they gonna do something or?
I don't know how they're making it right now because I think they're from Thursday to Saturday.
Yeah.
So they must be doing something to generate some money, or a little bit of money to keep, to pay the taxes. Is, is that acceptable or are you gonna open up a can of worms?
And, well, I mean, if Scott issues a violation, if they can send a letter, the board. I think I can get the board to try to work with Robin Hills Farms rather than tighten the thumbscrews, but say, hey, you know. Work with us here, let's, what can you do here? Uh, rather than, you know, threaten them with lawsuits and things.
Isn't giving them a violation kind of a threat too, though? I mean, if, if we say, hey, you're, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing.
Well, they gotta be, they gotta be.
I think they're used to it because we do give it, we do say that to them every year they come in for the special use permit. So, or their uh special event permits, we do tell them that, and that's why they give us that list of the items, how. These relate, relate to the.
And, and if we say nothing, they're gonna keep pushing the boundaries because they figure we don't care, so.
So, from a, from a perspective of, we have one agritourism thing, we potentially have two other farms that should also be agritourists, like. I feel kind of uncomfortable of, like, yeah, you're, you're not quite there, but you're close. Versus, hey, you should be here and you're not doing anything at all, but I don't know, if it's a little uncomfortable for me. To go after them when I don't feel like there's a major problem, and then we have these other two that are just like ignoring it.
You think Tantray Farms is ignoring it and they should be some.
I don't know if they know.
I, I would guess they're not, I don't think they're ignoring it on purpose, but it is something like, if you are hosting.
What do they do out there? What are they hosting at, at Tantray?
Well, like, they'll have.
It's their dinners, but those are exempt under.
Right, but.
And like, and uh.
Have kids come out for field trips.
And like, um.
I don't know.
Like the concerts.
They have what?
Like music events, don't they?
There's just parties, private parties, I mean, you can have a park, private park, you can have a harvest party.
You can.
Private harvest, you know, it's not any major event, but, I mean, this is the occasional, I mean, I.
School, school, they probably have.
Which, they probably don't think anything of it, they probably don't know that.
They've done it for so long.
Yeah.
It's just part of.
It's not every day.
They definitely know the Right to Farm Act requirements, they're running the Washina uh food hub and.
I don't know, maybe they're in, they're not in violation.
Hub and.
Yeah, they might not be a violation.
Yeah, well, they're.
If it's, if it's learning, I don't know, you know what I mean, it's like, kids are learning stuff about the farm.
Yeah, I don't know what the Right to Farm, we could ask and see.
Yeah, barn sanctuary.
Oh, yeah, that one.
That, that's one is more of a, yeah, they're, I feel like they're purposely ignoring it. And Tantray, they're farming and I appreciate that, they're feeding people, they're educating people.
Yeah.
But.
Right.
I don't, yeah, and what does the farm, what does the barn sanctuary do?
They are rescue, a farm rescue.
And what are they doing out there?
Farm animal rescue.
That would be in violation, what, like, what types of?
Oh, they have a lot of fundraisers.
Fundraisers.
So meals and huge.
No, they had a uh, they had a show on TNT on it too, did they get a, a permit to do that?
No.
So, yeah, and wasn't the owner of that the sit, the supervisor at the time?
He was, yeah, that was before I was on the planning commission.
He's the only one running it now, one son left and went to Australia.
I didn't know where he went.
Didn't he go to Australia? That barn sanctuary is not doing very good out there.
Their stocking density is very high.
What?
They have a lot of animals in close proximity.
Is that why, I mean, he came in to look, because he wanted to expand, so.
And they should.
Yeah, that.
They bought the property.
And we, that's when we informed them of.
That, not fault.
They're starting to do stuff there.
What did they, where did they buy it?
They bought a whole property down in, um. Is it Ellsworth?
Ellsworth Road.
Road.
They did buy that property, okay.
Is that in?
Manchester.
Oh, it's not in.
I don't know, I'm assuming, that's.
Yeah, live, was it, um. What township is that?
Here's, is that Sharon?
Is it Sharon?
Is it Sharon or?
No.
Freedom.
Freedom town.
Freedom.
Freedom Township.
Freedom, yeah.
Well, again, I mean, I'm looking for specific things that they do at their site, you know, that are, would be in violation.
I'd say there were a lot more early on, I'm not.
Yeah, there were a lot.
Not really noticing much.
Active, like when they used to have a Facebook page and it used to come up, they were pushing like. They must have been pushing some sort of ads because it would come up on my feeds all the time.
Yep, mine too, and they were in the schools asking the kids for donations and having kids out for. Shows and different, meet the animal.
People come and stay with it, if you give enough money to a certain animal, you can, you have privileges to things. I heard one day it was like you walked to the mailbox and there was trucks just showing up.
Yes, and, and it, they have to report online like how much shows up, it's a lot, because they're a nonprofit. It's, it's millions, yeah.
I know the vet, the veterinarian makes a lot of money there.
Oh, yeah. TNT show probably helped that a lot.
I, I think it did, yeah.
It's, yeah, I mean, these are, these are definitely good problems to have, if, if this is your worst problem in this township is. Large properties have some little things on them. Um, because the alternative is they just divide it up into residential and.
That's right.
Having subdivisions everywhere, so.
I don't know if you guys, last month or so, read the news about uh little, no, it was um. Mission Peninsula Township up in.
Wineries.
Yeah.
Traverse City.
In the Traverse City area, yeah, the winery sued the township because it was zoned for agriculture and. This township lost fifty million dollar lawsuit.
Really? And that was because the township had claimed that it was against their egg tourism ordinance and.
Yeah.
They were like, well, you allowed them to put this stuff in and then you're not allowing them to use it, so.
That's where the Oak Island brothers live.
Oh, really?
That's their winery.
Yeah.
That's, that's where they get a lot of the money.
It wa, it was an interesting case um to go back and read, it was in all the. MTA stuff and everything like.
It was in the Wall Street Journal, I think.
Yeah, I should, I should print it out and uh.
It's pretty good.
And give it to these guys next meeting.
Give them an idea.
How, how bad it could be.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll send uh, I'll send them something and we'll see what they respond with. I'm guessing they'll, although the management's totally changed since the last time they came in for a special event permit, I know.
It changes all.
All those people were le- left and started their own stuff and now it's all new people out there, I don't know who's out there now, so.
You brought it up, I mean, do you see something that we should be doing or what would?
I'm just.
I don't know what to do, I was just wondering if there was, if he heard anything, I didn't want to start. Sending letters because you're gonna get the same old thing, and is that the worst thing that can be there? In my world, no, we can have a lot more problems there than just that.
Well, and I think if, if we allow them to claim, I mean. They claim that this is what they're doing and we say, yeah, that looks good, you know, that, the end, you know? So, we can get that letter again or we can wait till the next time they come in for a special event permit and get that letter again.
Because this was part of their vision, they were supposed to put up a great big barn and have what? This is, early on was their vision, couple of million dollars I think slipped away or, like I said. Visions changed throughout the whole thing.
Yeah, I think the funding source changed on that whole thing, under the federal government, so.
Yeah, pandemic probably had a little to do with change of direction too, since.
Oh, it was.
Public places became taboo for a while.
It was the immigration law, I think, that changed, although now it's like, do they, it's like five hundred thousand dollars or something. Now that you can buy a green card or something. So.
Have a Christmas.
Yeah, they raised, or like one point five million or something, it's called, it's called the gold card now.
Oh, yeah.
Thing is what it's called, so maybe they can get that money again.
Yeah.
Oh, I believe now you have to actually pay for it, before you had to have it invested in property in the United States. Now I think they just take their, pull out money.
Because when he first came in and they started telling us what they were gonna do. And it was hard to call him a liar because.
Scott's aware of that.
On paper, it didn't act like it was gonna work. Because they're gonna have school bus, they were gonna go get kids and bring them out there, they're gonna have flower class, they're gonna have this, they're gonna have a store.
They actually, they actually did a lot of that stuff in the early days, uh, my sister was huge into the local food scene. And they were doing a lot of programming out at the site, before they put up the big building and all of that stuff, they had. Like, all, they had like the farmers markets out there, they had like the whole. Uh, hydroponic thing, you could go out and do classes at and stuff, and it was all egg related. I don't know what happened there.
At one time you could buy a half a lamb or what, what, a quarter or whatever, you could actually buy something out there now. I mean, like I said, vision got lost someplace.
I think, yeah, it was really cool the first few times we went out there.
Yeah, they were doing a lot of cool, like, local farms programming up. I'd gone out there.
Do we need to?
Yeah, play, I remember.
Action on this or just?
I don't think so, I think send.
I'll just send them a, I'll, what I'll do is I'll send them a warning notice and, and that they can just send us back. A letter with what they're doing out there, you know, on my warning notice, I'll just say, can you please? Inform us how you're meeting your special use permit requirements.
You good with that, Tom?
Yeah.
I'd say something to put corn maze there, put pumpkins.
You'd have to have corn, just to be able to get corn mace in there, but yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine it would be a hit. So, I mean, they have the parking, they have the building.
Yeah, that does.
I mean, those, those fall places are packed, I went to one this weekend and it was just jam packed.
Yeah.
But again, you gotta have the employees and you gotta have the people to run them, so.
And the insurance.
Yeah.
They shouldn't, not as a farm, like, they're not protected under the Right to Farm Act either, because they're not actually producing for agriculture. So like, looking at the, the Barn Sanctuary website, they are charging for tours. Twenty-five dollars per adult, fifteen per child, private tours are two hundred and fifty dollars, group tours five hundred. Field trips, ten dollars per child, yes, and because they're not producing food. They do not fall under the Right to Farm Act.
Yeah, so it's purely a commercial venture.
Correct.
It's a nonprofit.
It, it is a nonprofit.
So it, it probably wouldn't comply under our egg tourism ordinance then either, because it's not agricultural use.
Yeah, this is completely different, I don't know what that would be.
I mean, what would it be, housing, hu- housing animals, it would be a animal motel.
It's like a kennel, not.
So, you can't foster any of the cows, right?
Right, and, yeah, that, it is, it is a very interesting classification there.
But again, I have to say it one more time, it's a good problem to have because.
Yeah.
We're looking for something now.
Yeah.
I don't think you can get too many complaints over people like saving animals.
I know. And I, I can see his theory, if he can save the farm. Oh, they has a money tree in the backyard there too, so that helps a lot with the taxes, so. If it helps with the keeping the farm as a farm, I can see.
Is that, oh, uh, McKernan's the farmer, alright, I didn't know.
Well, that was.
It was his mom and dad's farm, yeah.
But are they farming it at all right now?
They just have the livestock on it.
Just the saving livestock, they're not actually doing any real farming anywhere on there.
Well, they do have the Verizon Tower too, that they probably get rubbing off of.
That's what I'm saying.
That probably would have. That was, yeah, that's a good money tree. That would have paid for taxes.
Yeah. But they couldn't work on because the osprey nest last year.
Oh, no, I forgot about that.
It's an interesting concept.
There's a lot of money there, if he bought that farm over there on Ellsworth Road. Somebody, there, there gotta be some money someplace.
There's a, they get a lot.
The lawyers make a lot of money.
Yeah, I think they make a lot of donation money to save animals.
Market, I seen they had a tent, it said Barn Sanctuary, last Wednesday I drove by there and they were putting up a tent there, looking for whatever they can get.
It is a, it's a weird thing to me.
LC State.
Um, I was, these animal, these animal savers, I always have, I have a story from when I was in. Uh, California, oh, and it was two thousand seven, and. Ev- everything crashed in two thousand seven, so planners got hit pretty hard. So we had seven planners and uh, we were laying off three. And at the same time, they were laying off the canine unit dog at the police station. Um, I lived in a community where the average house price was one point five million dollars, so most people were very wealthy. Um, somebody donated uh two hundred and fifty grand to save the pet, the dog. Uh, canine unit for five years, and we laid off three human beings, that's that day, that same day. At the township board or at the city meat council meeting, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Can I second?
Pause in favor.
We seconded Doug's.
I, I did, I don't know if I'm able to, but if I am, yes.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
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 Good talk.
We should pass.
That's alright, we'll get an update.
Oh, I can tell my father-in-law I talked.